Alright, let's get the show started tonight, guys. Seven o'clock. Looks like we got it right here. But John, before we do the pledge, though, I'd like to take just a moment of silence for to remember all the people who perished in the 9/11 attack. Alright, with that, thank you. Let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very welcome, everybody, tonight. I know why most of you are here, I'm pretty sure, so we'll just kind of keep moving on here with things with the minutes. Vance, I don't know if you want to just do a quick overview on the minutes? If there was anything that you wanted to...
Well, any questions, Al?
I didn't have any. I didn't know if you were all good there?
I'm good if you guys are okay with that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Sharon makes a motion.
I'll second.
Dave makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move along to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I do...
Pardon me? I will try to, yes.
I do have two corrections on the consent. If you scroll down, Brian, to...I should have numbered these. Next time, I will. That $2,000 to SRF Consulting. Sharon, I think we're going to put that on hold tonight.
Yes. Yeah, we'll bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. And I do have one addition, and that is Jim sent over the estimate number five to KPH for Lost River for $2,000...
Two hundred.
Can you repeat that number, Vance?
Yep, $244,098.54. That's estimate number five at Lost River.
That's for August's work.
So I would ask the board to approve that tonight.
Okay, was there anything else on there?
Unless there's any other questions on the consent, I'm okay with it.
No more questions. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Dave makes a second. So all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, approved. Have the regular agenda items. I don't know if there's any additions to that. Like I did mention to you, Gary, we'll probably tomorrow night be in front of planning and zoning, okay? We can go over a little bit this night if you want, but I mean, most of what you need to do is in front of planning and zoning, so...but we'll still go through it. Anything else that we need to add or change? Okay, then I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion.
Second.
Brian makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, then we're going to move on to the public hearing on the 2018 budget, which is why everybody is here, I'm sure. So how we're going to do this tonight, folks, is we've got a little presentation we're going to put together, explain a little bit why we came up with the numbers as we did. Then we're going to take some input from the public on this, and we'll just kind of talk about where we're at with this thing. So I will get started here. Like I said, so obviously, everybody got their letter in the mail explaining, you know, if you saw the mills, we're going to be going up. And so what we're going to try and do here is explain that. Come on, computer, work with me here. So if everybody can see up here, the agenda, we're going to, you know, send welcome for the evening here. We're going to talk a little bit about why we got here, some of the factors that kind of played into this bit. Going to talk about the budget summary, the city staffing that is going to change. That's part of what this budget is about. Plus, we're closing comments on it, and then this is where we get to the comments. And I'm not sure why my computer is going to have to go south on here. Okay, so on the emerging issues here, the city operations, obviously, is a priority of 2018. One of the things that we ran into, and I'll preface this a little bit. When we came on board about a year ago, a year and change ago, when we did the budget last year, we didn't have enough time, really, to kind of get the full impact of all the things that were going on. So that's why last year, the mills pretty much stayed as they were. There wasn't really a lot of things that we understood at that point in time to make any changes, any adjustments. You know, we kind of went with what we knew in that month and a half. So we spent the last year pretty much researching, trying to figure out, you know, what do we need to have in the city right now? Where are deficiencies? What are we lacking? What is needed? Equipment-wise, staff-wise, all the different things that help make a city run more efficiently? Where are we short? So we spent a lot of time on that. That's been pretty much a whole year coming up with this. One of the things that we ran into this year, obviously, the next growth phase. Whether anybody likes it or not, growth is coming to Horace. You can see why, because right now, we've got West Fargo coming up to our border, and they're going to be done building there not too long from now. Fargo's going to not do much until that diversion gets done. So that means that we're kind of the only game in town right now where the development's coming, okay? Unfortunately, or fortunately, if we want to look at it, that's where the game is coming right now. When they announced that school, I'm sure everybody's heard about that, that they're proposing to put a school right north of the church. There's 90 acres up there that is going to support a middle school and high school at some point. The assumption is right now that in 2021, that's when the school will be opened up there. That is a very tight timeframe if that all takes place. Again, we're talking, when the demographer came down here to talk to us about this school and all the things that might be going on with it, they were talking that our town could double in size in less than five years, okay? That's a tremendous amount of growth from 2,700 to 5,400 people in that timeframe. The school's going to be part of a driver on that. So along with that, we have public safety, or the housing demand driving infrastructure improvements. Again, we got phone calls all week long after that announcement that the school might be coming to Horace north of the church, okay, from developers. They are wanting to get in on this action. So obviously, public safety is a continued priority. That's why we have two deputies in town. Some of you guys have met them personally, unfortunately, probably, but it is what it is. They've done a tremendous job of taking care of some issues that were in town, and that is kind of why they're here. It's our public safety for all of us. The North Coast State aid revenue decreased by another 20% this year. You guys all heard about that. The year prior was 23%. We've taken a pretty good knock that the state's not sending us anymore, okay? So go ahead, Dave. Brian, move on to the next step here. Okay, so budget summary. The 2017 budget that we're currently working right now is $700,000, roughly, about $700, $1,000, $100. What we're moving up to right now is what we're proposing is a $1.1 million budget expense. Part of that's got to do with two full-time staff members that we're going to be bringing on board. One of them is going to be a city administrator, which is some person that we need to start running operations around here. The second full-time person that's going to be coming on board is a city planner. That is one thing that we don't have, that we desperately need right now. I think everybody can remember what happened when Superior was talking about coming in here in an area where they probably shouldn't. That's just because we didn't have some of this stuff planned out right. Now, with all this growth coming, or potential growth coming because of the school, we have to get ahead of this, or we're just going to have a hodgepodge of stuff around town that's not going to look good at all. We talked about building maintenance on here. We've got improvement that we got to do. We need shingling on the roof here. Some of you know how old this place is. We need to put shingles on the roof, or we're going to have leaks going on right now. Just the maintenance of existing buildings. Some of this stuff has been put on hold for an awful long time. We need to either start doing something with it, or we're going to have more issues. It's like if you don't change oil in your car and you run it 12,000 miles, you know what happens. It's not good. Same thing with the equipment maintenance. We need an additional snow truck. Our street sweeper is old. I don't even remember how old.
1994.
There you go. We could put a Pioneer plate on it, almost. Same thing with confined space equipment, just things like that. Some of the stuff we may not need anymore, and we can contract it out. These are some ways we're trying to save money, because it's kind of silly to sit and house equipment that we only use two or three times a year, when we can contract it out, and it saves us money in the long haul. That's what this is about, trying to make those determinations in what we can do. What do we need to keep? What do we need to get rid of? What can we contract out to save money? Okay? Okay, so this is the mill levy history of the town here over the last 10 years. You can see that it's pretty much been a flat line, which is great, except when the town is growing. We've added on two or three more developments here over the last four or five years, okay? You can't keep the mill levies like that and not...and we won't be able to do city services. We just can't do it. When you don't have the money, there's only so much you can work with. We're expanding the town. Things are moving right now. That line probably should have gradually gone up as opposed to the spike that you're seeing there, but that didn't happen. So this is why we've kind of come up with, this is what we're going to have to get to to help the town get past, get with the growing pains that we're going through right now. Okay? This is showing a little bit of how the state funding came to be, and we didn't have much there up until 2010, and then all of a sudden, we started getting oil money. All the cities across the state got oil money. So it went up, it went up. You can pretty much see when the oil monies quit flowing, basically. And that's, they're projecting that's probably, that might go down again next year. So we had a nice... Yeah, so we had a nice peak there that was fun to have, but we can't rely on that anymore, because that may not be there next year again. Okay? So with the city staff stuff, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Fennel, because he's in charge of operations. I'm going to let you take it from here, Dave. Go ahead.
Thanks, Corey. So one of the main areas is just providing the staff to assist our citizens in a number of different areas. One of the areas that we found is, you can take a look at what our current staffing is in 2017. We have a city auditor, a city inspector we are hiring that is going to be talked about tonight, that was projected this year, an assistant city auditor, and that is our public works. We have two full-time and one part-time. That is our current staffing for 2017. One of the big changes for 2018 that we are proposing is, as you can see there, is two additional staff. One is a city administrator. I'll take a little, I'll talk about what roles these people will have, and a city planner. We do also have to deal with a city assessor. We're working with the county on a contract basis for that. That is not a significant dollar amount, but we're working with the county there to take care of that. Our previous assessor was working part-time and actually retired. So this year, the county has picked it up, but we'd like to work with them to provide a full-time type support for us on assessing for 2018. So why don't we move on to the next slide? So the new staff that we're working with, one is a city administrator. The goal of the city administrator is kind of like the president of the company. They will lead all of our daily city operations. They will oversee all of our staff. They will manage all of our assets. Now, assets includes not only our equipment, our people, but also our public works. Are we maintaining roads properly? Are we projecting needs for our roads, for expansion, for chip seal, for all the different things we're doing? Are we maintaining our water system properly? All of our sewer systems, all of those types of things that we're dealing with, this person will deal with on a day-to-day basis and work with our staff. They will also coordinate city projects. A lot of that, at times, is falling onto either us as council members, or sometimes things potentially fall through the cracks. We need to make sure we have somebody on staff that can work directly with our engineers and our lawyers to well-manage our city projects that are going on. The last one is improving our city operations and processes and making sure that they're, all of our individuals, whether it be our planning and zoning, whether it be all of our employees, are following the processes we want to follow to make sure that the city is run efficiently. So that's really the goal of that position. Finding somebody with a lot of experience, it is a significant position. It is almost a six-figure position that is going to come on board. So when we get to the dollars and cents of what the increase in that area is, a lot of that is related to this administrator. The next one is the city planner. That is to develop our long-range plan. We have an older, long-range plan, but we need to do a new one to prepare for the growth that is coming, to stay ahead of that, to manage it properly, and to keep what we want as a city versus having us being run over by, say, a developer or other cities. We want to keep Horace kind of as a small-town feel, and the only way to do that is to get ahead of that growth and manage it properly, and to direct and manage our current future growth, and then assist our planning and zoning group, who's doing a great job of trying to improve and review our ordinances, but that planner has significant experience that can assist them as well to get to that next level, so we're prepared. Now, that's the two main new staff that we're going to be bringing on. Go to the next slide. This does mean an adjustment to some of our current staff. So Vance Kemmer, who's our city auditor, kind of takes on the city administrator role, but as we're growing, it's just too much work for one person to do all of that work at once. So Vance's role will be changing to be more around financial and helping us manage our growth related to finances, streamline our financial operations of our city, help develop a long-range financial strategy. What are other funding sources we can use or gather? How can we utilize all of the dollars we have properly and efficiently, and to, as I said, research new funding sources? We are just going to be hiring, talking about review tonight, of an assistant auditor we had projected last year, put in the budget. That person will help Vance to take on things like the city billing, improving our city billing, being able to do payments online, be able to do credit card processing, automatic withdrawals from your accounts. Having somebody here who can be here all, as well, between the gentleman all the time to help with issues, to help with permits, all of those different things, do a lot more of our accounting, because Vance is very stressed with all of the different work that he has to do, and assist us with other office things and HR duties as this individual can support. So those are some changes to the existing staff that we have within the city and the new staff.
Okay, so just kind of wrapping up here a little bit. Again, we're a growing, dynamic community. We are going to be growing. The school is probably going to precipitate a lot of that, and it's going to happen relatively quickly, the way it's looking, okay? So like I said, we are trying to get ahead of this. We're trying to make sure, and talking with other cities who have experienced this type of growth in the past, we got, one of the ladies I was talking to one time said that when she was discussing about Horace, she said, "Well, you guys are almost like Watford City East," because of what the growth that they went through during the oil boom. That's what she was thinking. We're, that's what we're going to wind up being. Well, if that's the case, then we want to be like what these guys learned from their mistakes and try and get ahead of this, so we don't run into the issues they ran into. So that's why we talk about the growth's got to be managed carefully, so we don't run up with a hodgepodge where you've got, you know, different places, or you've got offices, but next to housing, next to, you know, industrial, that kind of thing. We get it spread out a little bit, so it looks like a town, a nice town. Things are laid out well. Expectations are, resident services will improve with this, because it'll be a little bit more efficient in how we move people around. Right now, it's not as efficient as it could be. We're going to get to a ticketing system. You call in, you got an issue, it'll get ticketed, it'll get sent off to one of our, to the city workers. We'll take care of it, okay? That's not happening right now. Sometimes things get lost in the phones or in the emails. I get that. We're trying to work on that. That's part of what this is going to be about, when we're trying to improve the process. We need people to help us do that. That's why we're bringing on those other staff people. And again, we're working to try and, you know, manage the spending. Unfortunately, we've got to spend a little bit of money at this juncture to make sure that we can stay ahead of what's coming our way. Because if we don't, again, we're going to be probably winding up with just a hodgepodge, checkerboard city that nobody's going to like. We don't want that. Nobody wants that. So that's part of what this is about, is trying to stay ahead of this, okay? So with that, that's pretty much, unless you guys...Brian, you got anything you want to add on that?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, so with that, I'll open up for comments. I was going to say go to the podium, but if you could just stand and say your name and address if you want to comment on this. We'll just do it that way, so no one has to sit and try and get over to the podium.
We'd prefer if everyone could go to the podium, just, you know, so that everyone, you know, that's, because we're streaming live, so that we can make sure we're, we can hear the question, and I will be monitoring some of the questions that come from Facebook to try and answer those as well. So...
Go ahead and open it up. Anybody got...
Yep.
I know people got questions, so...
I came in late. So I just want to know, how much did the taxable value of Horace go up in the last year?
I think it was in average, or was it...
No, 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 no. The taxable value of all the properties, including the new properties, how much did that increase? Not the assessment, but the taxable...
Nine million to 11 million.
Went up $2 million?
Yes.
And at the current, at the previous mill rate, how much would that increased, increase in property bring the city? That $2 million of taxable value?
I don't have that number right now, but I could certainly get it to you. It's not a sig...
Nine million generates $220,000, two more million will generate a fortune.
Approximately, yes.
The taxable value of Horace only went up by $2 million in the whole, in the whole year?
Correct, because most new houses get $150,000 two-year abatement. So that's one piece. And second is, people may be coming off the rolls of that two-year abatement, and we haven't had significance such as business or anything like that. It is mostly only housing right now, and that does not bring up value as much as business can bring up value in the town.
Okay, so this is the true, true value based on the property statements, not the assessed value? Is that what you're telling me, that $2 million?
It's what the county...
Right, that's a county calculated number. They give us that number in an annual...
So the actual value is a lot more than that?
Could potentially have gone up more, because of the tax abatements. You'd only agree it went up that much.
Okay, I don't think I can get to the podium.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
You talk about controlling the growth. Well, as, as the years go by, we're going to start making money off of those houses that are already being up right now. You just said that it's not going to have a two-year abatement.
Yep.
So raising, so in your opinion, all of you, raising the taxes for the current people right here by 90% was the best way to get ahead of this, this growth? We, you have control over the growth. It does not have to be as fast as it is. You're the ones that okay the developments, aren't you?
Which is true. But still, we still have to have it planned out. Again, it could be an hour, seven, eight years out, agreed, but it's still got to get planned out and figured ahead of time before any of this stuff can take place.
But you believe that you would have to raise it 90% seven years from now?
No, I hope, no, I hope not.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm hoping, I mean, like I said, this should have been a gradual slide up. This should not have been what we've got right now. But we are here. I don't know, when we sat down and figured this out, you're right. I mean, I wish there was another way to do this, but we have to, we are looking at having to have these people on staff now to be able to get this figured out ahead of time.
So what will happen to the people that can't pay the 90% increase under taxes? They'll see another house open up in Horace, I guess.
I suppose. I mean, I don't know...
Keep, keep in mind...
The people that voted for you did not vote for a 90% increase in their taxes. They expected much more of a, of a plan, a thoughtful process than a 90% increase in one year. And I'll sit down so other people can talk, but that seems excessive by any stretch of the imagination, a 90% increase. Now, I realize it had gone for a number of years, and you could see that was gradual.
Yep.
But let's think about it, 90% in one year, that would be too much for some people. Some people are on fixed incomes. I doubt that they're going to see an increase in their social security by 90%.
It isn't a 90% change on their overall tax. It's a 90% on, so one of the, one of the things that we looked at when we were assessing and comparing, you know, the taxes that we pay as a city of Horace compared to other cities around us. One of the things that affects us harder is because we are in the West Fargo School District. We pick, we end up paying, as a community, end up paying more tax because we're part of that school system. You go to other towns like Anderland or some of those towns, they just don't pay as much, you know, of those, those taxes. That's one factor that plays into it. But keep in mind, it is a ratio. It sounds like a lot, but when you look at the overall percentage of your tax amount, it's, it's, we're moving it up to a point where we're comparable with cities of our size. Okay, so that's one of the analysis pieces that we did. It was to look at, all right, for about the number of services, the number of staff and so forth that we have as a city, how are we comparable to other cities? And we were way understaffed, and our taxes overall were much, much lower than cities around us. And, okay, that, that has happened. You saw that reason, right? Because the mill levies have been kept flat, and we just haven't brought in those services. But you can see here, one thing that mitigated it, because we were getting the money from the state, that kind of drove the, okay, we're getting all this money, we don't need anymore, right? So then the pressure to raise those mill levies went down, because we didn't need it, because we got this money coming in. Well, now we reach a tipping point where, okay, should have we hired those people before? Possibly. But now we've reached a point where the demand for construction, the work that's going on, is just going up astronomically, and we have to get ahead of it. And, and right now, we're putting in so much time as a city, as all the employees, that it's becoming overwhelming. So that's, and that's why things are slipping through, and we want to try and, and make sure that the city staff to keep the services at least where they should be for all the residents.
Okay, but you have to understand that that did not include specials, and there's going to be a bond issue from the West Fargo School District either this year or the next year to build that school you're talking about. So the taxes will go up again. So you're looking at a significant increase this year just from the Horace amount. Plus, there's going to be specials. There's the water plant that we have to pay for sharing with other cities, and then there's going to be a bond issue, and the bond issue, you should know, will pass, because it'll be voted on, all the people in West Fargo who didn't have the Horace increase. So I just think that 90% is an excessive amount in one year. And I'll sit down and do the best I can.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to argue that it isn't. It's a shock. It really is, and I get that, you know? And when we, when we actually, you know, the first time when we went through this whole thing, trying to come up with all of the stuff that we had figured that we needed to get squared away, we were up to 96 mills, which is, again, ridiculous. We had to sit and come up with a way to figure out, how do we sit and mitigate some of this stuff, so it does, doesn't come into this year's budget? It'll be in the following years, and that we don't have to deal with all this stuff right now. That's why we picked the things that we absolutely needed to get squared away this year and put it in there. So, go ahead.
I assume when you sat down and came up with 90%, you didn't just think that was the best idea for everybody in the room? But was, was there a thought given to spreading that rate over three, four, or five years to get to that level that you needed to be at? And if so, what was the deciding factor that didn't make that a possibility?
Part of it had to do with the staffing. We talked about city administrator. We need to split up that role. We need to get another person in here to help out with being, with basically managing and handling the city affairs, okay? It gets to be too much for one person, like we talked about with Vance. He's been trying to do it. It's just not going to happen anymore, okay? We need that. When we talk with the engineers, we talk about city planning, we talk with other cities about city planning, okay? That's the first thing they tell you right now, being they announced the school. We have to get ahead of that and understand, being the school moved its location, you guys saw where the sign was initially, that's what our old city plan took into account, was that was where the school was going. Well, then they did a land swap another north of the church. That changed the whole land plan that we had for Horace.[1656.16] Basically, it obsoleted it just like that. So because now that we know where the school is more likely gonna go, a city planner will come in and help make us understand, okay, here's the school, here's all the things that are gonna happen around that school, here's how we plan what's gonna go on around that school, okay? Otherwise, it's just gonna be a mess. And West Fargo has gone through a couple of messes. We've learned from their mistakes with this. Getting ahead of that so they know what's gonna be around that school, and what are some of these other developments are gonna be like. That's what we're trying to do here, just head off with some of the problems West Fargo ran into.
The second piece is really around the equipment and maintaining the assets that we have. We tried to put off our equipment as much as we can, but US citizens expect that we're doing things efficiently, and, you know, we're putting off a snowplow in this winter season, but we're trying to prepare for one next winter season because we'll have additional side. The composting area, we can't do burning barrels anymore. We have to prepare for you guys to be able to put all your composting and those types of things. That's a significant dollar amount that we need to do. The other is just maintenance on our buildings. I mean, the roof on this building, it's not a significant dollar amount. It's about seventy-five hundred dollars, needs to be replaced. And we need to make sure that we maintain our equipment. As I said, a street sweeper, it's nineteen ninety-four. It takes our guys about three weeks to clean the streets in this city because the watering system doesn't work. We can't get that fixed. So we're trying to find ways to either contract work such as blading, which is something we've been getting a lot of feedback on. Another is trying to lease this to keep our dollars low. So we tried to reduce those things as much as we can to maintain it. So we are trying to put off equipment and things like that, only doing the minimum we need to do, but it will be consistently year after year after year. The biggest hit really this year is the staff. That is the largest one to try and get ahead. So those are the kind of three areas that we put in the presentation as well about.
What are the numbers for your, for your preliminary budget, takes, takes ten years of city equipment? How much is the increase?
Uh, we had it at, in two thousand sixteen, it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Because we were trying to, not sure of everything, we put it down to thirty-five thousand dollars last year, and it goes back to a hundred thousand this year.
So most of the changes were-
Not a lot, just that the dollars were not there a year before.
So you need to put it back to where it was?
Right.
So that's not the hardest of the increase to get the, the money?
But it was a cumulative thing, right? Because in previous years, when the number was higher, there were other things that were lower, right? So it was balanced out.
I was just asking about the-
Yep, oh yeah, right. But there were other things that could balance out, so it was a negative, you know, no change in the mill levies in the past.
But isn't some of your equipment cost and maintenance cost one-time costs? I mean, if you buy a plow truck in two thousand eighteen, you don't have that expense in the next year. My question is, if you look three or five years down the road, you jack up that mill levy now, how do you maintain that? Have you got more expenses that don't show up? I noticed in your other expense category, and I have to use this, the only information I have, you've got a thirty-three percent increase in it, going from four hundred and sixty-six thousand to six hundred and nineteen thousand. What is that? I understand the FTEs, but there you have other years that are going up. And I guess maybe a detailed budget or better information. I have concerns when your percentages aren't even calculated correctly. The budget isn't going up thirty-seven percent, it's going up sixty percent.
Those were mistakes.
And, yeah, and, you know, someone's gotta be a numbers person here, and this isn't enough information, especially looking at mill levies, and that's for a lot of average people to have some semblance of understanding what's going on.
So the budget, the detailed budget is available at our office. We can certainly, we should put the budget out on the website with all the details you guys can look at. We put it out in comparison of seventeen to eighteen, so you can see the dollars. But the main three areas were actually those. We had minimal increases in the others.
You also saw your property taxes maintaining leveling, as a certain gentleman pointed out. Not only has the county raised them three percent for two thousand eighteen, but you had two million dollar growth, it's gonna be a taxable situation. Also, a couple of years ago, we, we voted on something that gave Horace the ability to gain sales tax revenue.
Correct, correct.
Is there any information, is that in here?
That's not in our general budget. That, those funds are dedicated to either infrastructure or other type of development in the city. On the home rule charter, only allows us to do certain things with those dollars. So those dollars will be used to try and offset some of the infrastructure costs and things that we're gonna do in the future.
The plan with that is, because right now, that started in April. We, you know, it was last November is when that got voted in, and then you had to wait until the fourth quarter, I believe it was, if I remember correctly. So basically, April one is when they started doing the tax collection. And right now, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars a month is what's coming in on that. So right now, the fund is at sixty-six something-
It was at, yeah, sixty-five plus, yeah.
What we'd like to try and do with that is, we can build that up just a little bit more, but it'd be nice to be able to do some of these infrastructure projects and cash flow out of that account. You know, be able to get a loan, and then cash flow out of that account. So we don't have to sit and do all these stupid specials. I don't like specials any more than anybody else. If we can come up with a way to cash flow this stuff and make this stuff help, make that account work for us, and we can use it that way, then we don't have to sit and cash flow out a lot of these infrastructure things that we're doing. Smaller stuff right now, not the, not the bigger things.
We'd like to be able to plan how much money is going to be in that fund, and right now, we don't have any history to be able to plan because the first check came in May. So we're, we're waiting.
But right now, it's looking like it's around twenty-two thousand every, well, it was a monthly check is what we're getting at the end of the month, right?
I get it on or about the twenty-fifth each month, yeah.
So that's what we're trying to do here, and hopefully, if that stays steady, then you can start doing some cash flow analysis against it. That's what we're trying to do, okay?
My name is Jim Do, and I live on Seventy Second Street, so... I, I think the key point is, and it bothers me the most, is you're gonna tax people out of their homes. And that's what bothers me the most. I don't know if it bothers you guys or not, but the complexion of Horace is gonna change. You're not gonna have the same people living here. One of the reasons I moved up to Horace and built in Horace is because it was affordable. Now you're making it so it's not affordable, I want a fixed income. My income is not gonna grow up ninety percent. I'm gonna have a choice of either moving, selling and moving, or dig out a loan so I can live here another ten years or something, I don't know. I don't like those choices, either one of them. I would rather not have the ninety percent, and I was better to spread it across the people that are going to be moving in, that you're welcoming with open arms, and then pay their share.
Yeah.
Spread it over to there instead of paying us with ninety percent and paying for their ability to come here. Put the price on them. That's what other cities do, they pass it on.
Mm-hmm.
Because you yourself said that the developers are basically holding out the mouth to develop it on here.
Right.
Then my people said, why aren't we giving a two-year abatement on their property tax for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? If all the developers are so hungry to get out here, then it's pretty cut and dry. You wouldn't have to be doing that.
And that's true. I mean, that is something we're gonna be talking about with our city planner, about that. That conversation has taken place before, but, you know, you had a comment, Vance?
I don't know, for the gentleman, what? Oh, hi. Approximately eight to ten years ago, the board implemented this tax abatement. For what reason? To spur growth, to spur, to spur growth. And, you know, perhaps that is something that this board, that we should all look at and dissolve, or, or fine-tune it a little bit. Because obviously, in my opinion, and I've been here for twenty-seven years, I don't know that we have to go looking for growth. It's looking for us.
Right, yeah.
Right now.
Totally agree.
We're first-time home buyers, bought a house three months ago. Excited. It's gone now. I moved to Horace not to live in West Fargo. I don't wanna live in West Fargo. This is why we're here, because it's affordable. We found a way to make it work here. We love the small-town feel. I grew up in Kindred, I know Lucas. This is what I want in a town, and I feel like it's getting sucked out. I feel like I gotta move farther away now. So we gotta leave. I can't take it. This is, this is not what I want. I can't, I'm not gonna be able to afford it. And I left West Fargo to come here. I guess I gotta go farther, I guess. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna be. Just can't afford it.
It's a challenge. It is a challenge, because we, we can either, I mean, we're, that's one of the things we wanna try and push the developers to make affordable housing, to, to your point. So, and, and so either, either we manage that growth so that we can encourage the development of, you know, affordable housing for all income ranges, so that it can be, you know, so there can be first-time home buyers like yourselves that can move into, into town. The challenge is, is to manage that growth, we just don't have the city staff today to be able to, to take that on. And so it's a, it's a matter of making the city functional, right? And, and right now, we need the staff to actually help the city provide the services that we're trying to do. So I hear what you're saying. We, we don't want that either, but it's, it's a reality that we need the staff to make the city function for the residents. And this is, unfortunately, it's, it's a number that is really shocking, right? And it was much higher than we anticipated. We don't want that either. I don't wanna have to pay that additional tax either. But it's a reality that if, if we want those services, then somehow we have to fund those services. And, and it, it's a trade-off. If we had done this incrementally over a few years, what, does it matter if we had done that in the past five years? Or do it in the future five years? It's still going up. So if, if that happens in five years from now, you're still in the same situation. So I, I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's just delaying the inevitable. That, that we do need these services, we do need these staff to manage our city. And, and unfortunately, it's, it's a reality.
I understand the need to, my name is Martin Colehalter, and I live down in South Acres, which is in the city of Horace. The last time I stood before this call was when I was asked if I even belong in the city of Horace. Yeah, I do, I was, and I was. I'm just gonna springboard off of this gentleman's comments. We moved in in two thousand thirteen. And the previous two years, my property evaluations went up ten percent, and went up ten percent again. And when I got this statement, you know, what, the county actually kind of stayed flat, but I was shocked to see this Horace jump. So I, I'm totally with him. Who lives in the small-town feel, I get it. I moved, I lived in Fargo for ten years. My neighbor was seven feet away from me, and, I mean, I, that's why I came out here, and I, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. That being said, I'm kind of springboarding onto my next deal, assessments and property evaluation. And I've talked to the county about this before, and nothing really seems to happen. But if you're gonna get another assessor on board, right?
Yes, it'll be the county assessors, probably who will be, will be contracting through the county.
Okay, our property evaluation is gonna get equalized here. Because my property was recent, like, two thousand thirteen, okay? My value went up. My neighbors also went up, but they're, they started down here, and I started up here because my property was recently sold. These things need to be kind of straightened out.
Right. No, and I think that's valid too, and that's the thing. We don't even have somebody out here, I mean, he, he retired, what, la-
Well, each-
He was part-time too, right?
Yeah. Each spring, it's usually in May, you know, there is a tax equalization meeting where you can-
Can you speak up, please?
Where you can, where you can speak to the, uh, the person in charge, which we were thinking it's going to be the county. But you do have an opportunity every year to discuss your taxes and where they're going and why they're going in the direction that they are. I don't know if that, if the board can address your, that question, but, no, but-
Yeah, sorry to interrupt here.
No, that's okay.
I'm on every May, so that time during the training doesn't mean my job, it's a-
Well, then talk, you can come and talk to me, and I'll relay all the information you want. I'd be happy to.
All right.
Sue?
My name's Suzanne, and I've lived on Brink Drive for twenty-one years, and I just can't believe that this time has flown by. When we built on Brink Drive, it was a gravel road. It was our understanding that we were not part of the city of Horace. I was welcomed to the city of Horace through the mechanics through a letter from the garbage disposal service telling me of the changes of my service, and, by the way, welcome to the city of Horace. So, you know, the growth of, I've seen the growth of this city. I do agree that there hasn't been adequate city planning in the past. It seems to me that this is a, a ruleless place where rules weren't enforced as far as land being able to be split up, subdivided. It just seems to be a free-for-all. So I do agree that there needs to be a system in place. One figure that you mentioned, you did not mention the, the projected salary figure for the city planner job. Do you have a ballpark for that?
It's generally in the range of depending, it could be seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars.
I think we're thinking around eighty.
All right.
It all depends on experience of what we're looking for.
So you also, you also mentioned that the city administrator job is a six-figure salary. Now, I worked with, pre- or prepared it all, and I just did a quick salary range scale. The, the median salary for a city administrator is sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. That's median. That includes cities like New York City, all the way to cities our size. So I don't know where you're getting the six-figure range, and I do believe that is excessive. So I would challenge you to revisit the salary ranges that you are asking for the type of work that needs to be done. This isn't the city of Fargo. This isn't as big.
I, I completely understand that, and I don't wanna pay a hundred thousand dollars for a city administrator either. But the side of it is, is we compete against those cities. And the other one is, I can't bring in, or we as a board can't bring in somebody with six to eight months or a year experience. We need somebody with five to ten years' experience, and that will mean an increase in salary. Now, that is what we put in as a budgetary number. If, if it comes in, you know, we can get it less, we would certainly do that. But we need to make sure that we can get the type of experience individual we can.
We'll reflect that in the next year.
You, you also need to set that salary range before you even advertise the job. So you need to get a handle on that before you even put out bids or advertise for that job. You can't have this slide and scale and say, well, we'll see what we can get. You need to make it, you need to make your job description of what the expectations are, how much work, how many hours, what this involves, what level of responsibility. You need to do some labor market research to make sure that this salary is in line for the city inside of Horace. My last comment to you is, I feel sorry for the first-time home buyers. This was our second home. We moved to Horace because of the small-town, we had children, we wanted them in that small-town feeling. This tax increase, I could move to the city of West Fargo or Fargo, and I will have paved streets. Right now, I do not have a paved street. I have my own septic, and I am paying for, for rural water. But this is like, what's the incentive for me to stay here? There really, there really isn't one.
I'm Del Pullman, the president of the Riverdale Homeowners Association. And my question, and what most of the residents talk to me, they wanna know, you know, what kind of services, additional services or service do we get for our taxes? Because we did ask Crawler's to, you know, kind of leave us alone, and they have, but Horace does basically little of nothing for us. We have our own water, we maintain our own wells, we pay for our own streets, we have our own septic. How much, how much of this money, this new tax increase is allotted for infrastructure, new infrastructure or maintaining what you have?
From this, well, okay. As far as the infrastructure goes, if I was looking through this correctly, there's probably more to do with the equipment. It's not so much for the infrastructure. Dave, you can help me out here a little bit, if that's what we're talking about here. It's more to get the equipment that we're using for the city resources right now. Either get it fixed, sell it, and get some new stuff, or get it contracted out. That's what we're, that's what that, that is for. The infrastructure is, as far as the, like, streets and things like that, that is like a separate fund. It's in our, our highway tax fund. That's where that's coming from.
And the sewer line hook up to Fargo, that has nothing to do with this tax increase?
No.
So this one's-
That's okay.
Will it be a sentence to buy new equipment every single year? Or will that reflect the budget reduction in the years to come?
The side of this is that as we grow, we need additional equipment. That's gonna be a piece of it. So right now, we're behind with some of our equipment. We're not looking to buy, we would prefer to lease because that's an efficient use of our dollars so that we can, every five, seven, ten years, whatever that agreement is, we can get more efficient equipment. So as we said, we have three plow trucks right now. No, we actually have two, and we have a tractor and a skid steer. We're gonna work this season with what we currently have. Then next season, which is the winter of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, when we have a significant amount of additional streets, then we would bring on an additional product or initial snowplow at that time, and there would be some dollars related to that in the budget. And we would do the same thing with additional equipment or replacing existing equipment that is not working. One of them is the blading of streets out in gravel and that type of thing. Our piece of equipment is not large enough to do most of the work that we need. We're working to contract that with somebody else that has the type of equipment so we don't have to go buy a large piece of equipment such as a two-hundred thousand dollar grader. So those are some of the objectives that we have to try and manage those dollars.
If this doesn't, you said this has nothing to do with hooking up to Fargo now, the, the, this tax increase?
Correct.
What happens when they do? How am I, shh, how, how's that going to affect the taxes then, if, once we hook up? Is that going to lift the way up again?
So right now, how that's gonna work is the, we call it the SSL, the sewer line, is basically a hookup to the new development that's going out west, and it'll go up here. Right now, that is all that's gonna be hooked into that system at this point. I don't know, down the road somewhere, I don't know how long these lagoons will be allowed to be around. Then that's when that might get switched over to there, but that's still down the road a ways, that's not-
I, I think the lagoons will be decommissioned in ten years.
I would think so, because I mean, the state's gonna get on that with us. And there's gonna be some point where the state comes in and says, that's it.
But that answer your question, ma'am?
I think the other piece of that is that other developments now have the opportunity to tie into that. So as, as land north of Horace continue to develop and developers pick, choose, like the school, for example, they need to tie in and they need sewer service, that's where this sewer line will allow that growth and allow that connection. So now, yes, you're right, some of the, you know, residents aren't getting some of those services today, but now, all of a sudden, we, we're putting in some of this infrastructure. In the future, we'll be able to offer that as a service. So that, you know, if your septic system is nearing its end of life, we can now give you the opportunity to say, as a neighborhood, we're not gonna force it on you. As a neighborhood, you can now say, I, you know, I want to connect to this. We've already had a couple neighborhoods that have said they want to get connected to that sewer line so they can either decommission their septic systems that they have today or their, you know, temporary lagoon that they have. So it's already begun, and you as a development, you know, a community, can, can petition the city to say, hey, we wanna hook up, we wanna be able to get rid of. Because the state, I have talked to the state health department, and they have said the current septic systems are basically not, you can't install them anymore because you have to have a mounded system. There's a new style that requires much more land for the old style. So it changes the rules, and all of a sudden, now, if, if with this in place, some of the homeowners that say, hey, my septic system is failing, I need it replaced, you may not have the ability to replace it. The state may not allow us. So that, we're trying to prepare for some of these things that are coming down the road so that when, you know, we don't, aren't caught in a pinch in the future.
In the back, just go through the back row here. In the back, just go through the back row here.
My name is Phil, I live in the country acre subdivision, um, I've been here since old four. The development, I think it's one of the frustrations, he saw the sign, he knew the school was coming. The developments were coming, I've been to enough of these meetings to know that development. Part, I'm in the construction business, I've talked to most of these developers. But I don't see the services increasing. In fact, I saw you guys looking to get new equipment, another snowplow. And it's still two full-time employees. Right now, my neighbor snowplowed our road last year, he did it here before. He's had, brought his own road grader out there. When I signed up for the city of Horace, that's all I asked. Make sure you come on here, snowplow, and maintain the road. We've had to park at the city. Realize I see some of you guys are new. Some of you are not new. Why? An increase like this over, what I'm starting to see is, I'm not gonna gain more new services. You guys are gonna buy equipment, which I understand, but that equipment is not gonna be able to come off to my street and maintain, if you have no means to rights. So how is that gonna be taken here?
So one of the things with this is, the city administrator's role is going to be to handle more of that, the day-to-day operations of their staff like that. And that's part of this ticketing thing that we're gonna try and get into. When you, when things get called in, gonna generate a ticket, it's gonna be gotten to, and one of the guys will figure out the logistics with that. And then then when they're done with it, they have to punch it out. So there's an accountability thing, and right now, we don't have that. There's not.
When you have a snowfall, ten inch snowfall, I get to punch it, send a ticket in to you?
No, not that, I'm just saying.
My neighbor will come, the front door.
I'm just saying, there's other, there's other times when we've gotten phone calls about getting a road graded and it hasn't happened, okay? We take a second call sometimes. And it could be because they got wound up with something with the sewer line or something like that. It does happen. But we also wanna make sure we track that so we know what's going on. Maybe we need additional staff there too. That's something we're not, we don't track it hard enough right now to know that for sure. You know? It's, that's, that's the thing, we gotta get better at tracking and that's part of what the city administrator's gonna help us do.
One last thing.
Go.
I have a thought a lot, it's also there with snowplow. We talked about this, and they've done a lot more infrastructure and they're less more autonomous. And he has never in thirty years had ninety percent increase in taxes. Yeah.
He said incremental ones.
Incremental ones, and we should, yes, again, this he says, we should've, and this is kinda on Horace's, Tom, as a city. It didn't take anybody but a pair of eyes to see what was happening five, ten years ago when I moved on here. I don't mind making that, I have young kids. I'm signing up for these schools, I'm taking on for these schools. But just because we swat land, a mile difference, we should've seen this a long time ago, that this is happening. These developments have gone on for a few years.
Right. I'm not gonna disagree with you. Back and forth.
Um, my name's Kate Dorstensen, I live on Shadow Lane in Horace, um, ten or twenty-two years. I guess, uh, my two questions, uh, have to do with the diversion and what kinda tax or special assessment as a city we're looking at for that overall? And then, um, again, reiterating on the sewer too. Is that special assessment going to be if you only hook up? Or is there going to be some sort of assessment overall board just a dream from Fargo to here? Because that's another tax.
Right.
That we're looking at besides the increase that you want to propose right now.
Lucas, they haven't done anything with that yet as far as getting together, so we don't really know how. The recommendation is that it's just the new hookups and then who's gonna be affected by this?
So just the new developments?
That's what we're planning on right now. Again, it goes to an assessment committee, they are the ones that have the final say on that. And that hasn't gotten there yet. So Lucas, if I'm wrong with that, let me know, but I mean, they're gonna have a get-together, so.
And they just determine who receives a benefit from the project and if you receive a benefit, that's how you get assessed for that.
I have heard at one time, since it's on the west side of the river right now, that any Horace residents on the west side will get a special assessment tax. I have heard that at once.
For what?
For the sewer, cause it's on the west side.
I. You guys don't.
No, I think when we drew the map, the map was drawn around the entire city, but that didn't mean everyone was gonna get assessed.
No.
That just meant that it was because everybody could be in the group. However, the assessments are not defined that way.
Okay.
That just, uh, define, it was the boundary of a city that identified, this is the potential area that could be assessed based on what the assessment committee decides. Who receives the greatest impact from that sewer line? And with the intention being that it's the new development because that's why it's going in. So I have a question.
That's what I had, well, sorry. On assessment, when you guys had the, the talk here a while ago on it, with the assessment committee. Is there anybody that's in the old section because Shane, you guys said could be on there, cause he's from the old section? And then all of a sudden, no, we don't want him because there might be a, a tiff there. So what happened there, is there anybody from the old section that's on the assessment committee? Not just the new one, because obviously they're gonna vote for us to pay for it too, because it's gonna lower their assessment. I sat right there when they approved Shane, they said that Shane could be on there, there was one spot that he.
Oh, no, you wanna know who's on the assessment committee and Shane was not, right?
Right, Shane was not on there.
Put on the list of people who could be, be appointed to the committee.
Right, and we had brought in another, I, I had another person that expressed interest in it, he and I talked and, uh, I nominated Steve to go on it. Another fellow.
Is he from the old section?
Pardon?
Is he from the old section?
He's from out west of town.
Yeah, in the new part. So I would imagine that he would vote more for their, for the assessment for us here because it's gonna lower their assessment.
No, I doubt it. I mean, that's not.
The way that commission works, it's just whoever receives a benefit, it's not targeting any areas. It's just taking the overall district map and if you receive a benefit, it's, it's equalized throughout those properties. And it's up to the special assessment commission, um, they have discretion as far as how they, they see it, but it's not a targeted, um, as you're saying, it's, that's not how it's done.
No.
Yeah, just to clarify, because, you know, I volunteered to be on that and when I was, when Ben brought my name up, he said I was put on the list. At that time, there was no list, I was the only person there, and he searched out and looked. So don't say there was a list and you chose someone else because there was no other names on the list. He's brought the fourth story, so. Chuck, you want me on there, I'm not that smart and understand that, but, uh, don't make up stories.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I call Steve.
Yeah, and as far as that position goes, it's appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by the council. So there's, there doesn't have to be a list, it's up to the mayor, so.
My name's William Ziegler, I live in Riverdale, I've lived there for thirty-seven years. When the river road was gravel. I retired in twenty-twelve from the Happy Hooligans. I'm com- I'm completely retired now. My main complaint is a ninety, looking at a ninety-three percent increase with, um, assessment three percent increase. I have choices of other places to live. I'm, I can go down to northwest Arkansas where the taxes are low. I love living in North Dakota, but this is gonna tip the balance for me. And as I sit here and listen, I'm not trying to put you guys on the defensive, but this feels like it's pro forma. This is going through whether you like it or not. And it, this is unreasonable. I'm not getting a ninety percent increase in my retirement pay. And it will tip my decision on whether I stay in North Dakota, cause I'm not gonna move into West Fargo and I'm not moving into Fargo. So if I'm gonna go through the pain and suffering of moving, I'm fine in a low-tax state. And that's the only thing I had to say.
Can we move on? It's an hour.
Yeah.
We wanna.
Go ahead.
I'm Marvin Fall and I'd like to agree with that gentleman. I am on a fixed income, I'm retired. I've lived on my farmstead now for over thirty years. Gravel road, septic tank. I don't see the city doing much of anything except giving me taxes. Is that really fair? I don't think ninety percent increase is.
Well, I just wanna add something real quick. I've been here since nineteen sixty-eight. Seen lots of changes, lots of, it was that Park Drive was a little dirt road, you know, the only way to get in my place was that way, there was nothing, so it was nothing. I think the population was two-hundred and ten, something like that. Uh, those were the days, but I, I don't, I, I won't be able to stay in my house either at that particular age because I don't have any other means.
My name's Jordan Brown, I'm on Brink, uh, on eighty-first and Brink. I think we've kinda discussed already, and I like to really have some, you guys take this under consideration, but, uh, we've kinda discussed in the idea in the room and what you guys have said is that a lot of these costs are being driven by this rapid growth. We also came to the conclusion that the council and you guys are responsible for approving or denying said growth. So if the consensus in the room, um, we've got developers, you know, jumping down our throats to get in here. If the consensus in the room and in the town is that we want to stay, stay small, do we have to do it all at once? Can we take these growing pains and strides over the next five years? Start small. Bring a, bring a council or, or a, a city planner on that has a little experience, let them grow with the rest of the community. We don't have to say, yes, everybody come here right now, let's raise it ninety percent.
Right, that's not the point. The point is though, you're talking about with the city planner though, we want somebody who's got some experience with, with what is coming, like the school. And you guys saw what happened to West Fargo when a school gets built, it, it was right away. We can control that, don't get me wrong, we can control that. I mean, we could just put in a one-year moratorium, okay? Nobody builds for a year. Do we get this all figured out, right? That could happen, I'm not saying it will, but that's something we could do if we wanted to. That's it, figure it out. We still need somebody to figure out that, okay, so we know the school's gonna be going there, then what do we want the rest of the town to look like? How do we get it so that we've got a nice-looking town? And yeah, we can control the growth over a span of time, but we still have to plan now, that's the.
I just think it should be given a lot of consideration when, you know, we're all here to live in a small town. We don't wanna live in West Fargo or Fargo. And raising taxes so we can grow as fast as West Fargo and become that city, I don't, I don't think anybody wants it.
And the point of, okay, the tax increase, the wasn't for, to spur the growth, it's to control it, that's what this is about. Cause we see what's coming, and you guys all see what's coming, and we can control that. But without mechanisms in place, it's gonna be a lot harder to do that. We don't have some of these things that we need right now, like the, the land use map, an updated one. How would we want this place to look? How do we want these developments to come in? I don't want developers coming in and telling the town how they're gonna do the development. I want us to tell the developer, this is what we want this place to look like. And without getting some help for that, I'm not qualified to be a city planner. Okay, I'm a software engineer, that's what I do. I can't design a city. Rest of you guys? We need help with that. Because like you, I'd like to keep the small-town flair too, and we've had these envision Horace meetings, that's what the whole conversation's been about. How do we keep the town's flair like we have right now as we grow and keep that ambiance going? It'll be hard to do, but if we plan ahead a little bit, maybe we can keep some of this going. And that's what we wanna try and do. If we don't plan, it will be gone, I guarantee it. If we can plan ahead a little bit, maybe we can keep some of these things. Okay, hold on, one, one at a time.
Isn't that everyone sitting here, they can't afford a ninety percent tax like they're out? Well, how are you trying to keep it? By running people out? I mean, I.
But how do you, I mean, it's a.
Why is, why is the ninety percent tax like Plan A? What are the other plans? Is there anything else, or is this just said, don't? This is what's happening. What about those taxes?
The point is, is we need the infrastructure for the city, for the, the city staff to help it, to help manage what we're doing today. I mean, as you heard, you know, Vance is overwhelmed, we got, we just don't, for the city our size, we need more staff. And that's the biggest driver behind the change. So if we say we're not gonna hire any people, then, okay, then your road doesn't get, continue to get plowed. We, you know, you call in and nobody picks up the phone because there's, you know, there's lots of things that just don't happen because there's not enough people to keep everyone on top of everything. So it's an issue.
So what's a fair share for, uh, the developers? What do they pay?
They're gonna be paying their, their special, you mean the developers or the, the people that buy those, the developers?
People that are coming in, developing all those properties. What's their fair share?
Well, they're gonna be paying their specials for getting all the infrastructure that is needed for that development. That's the homeowner that's gonna accept that.
Builders don't pay up. Builders don't sell lots.
They have to, they have to bear the risk of holding, buying that property and developing it and, and putting all that capital outlay long before they sell it.
Raise taxes, well, then maybe consider a certain rate on development coming in. That they pay a, a year, even though they're gonna take the risk, they still could take, take a small percentage to lower our taxes. If you understand.
They, they are paying, they are paying, as soon as they buy that chunk of land, they're gonna be paying their, their taxable value of that land. And as soon as they start developing that, the, the value of that land goes up considerably. And all of a sudden, their tax rate goes up considerably, just because they start developing. No, before they, before they, so Lost River is an example, right? Because that development has started, the land value has gone up because the infrastructure is starting to go in. So now, next year, he hasn't sold any lots, or maybe he sold a few, but those lots, he's paying taxes on that increased value of that land. So his portion has gone up dramatically since he bought it. So now he's gotta pay those taxes every year until every one of those lots is sold to somebody. And, and the specials that go along with it, and that could be four, five, seven, ten years. So that's a lot of money for a developer to outlay.
We have a traffic report in Kansas.
Yep.
Paying the driving lot of town?
It's not the point to drive people out of town. It's not the point.
We, we have a couple of challenges. You know, the, the city mill levy increasing certainly raises taxes. But the state taking away that twelve percent tax abatement that we've all benefited from in the last few years is killing us. Because that makes our taxes look like they went up twice as much. We have no control over that. The, the state budget, the state budget is not going to increase. Cities are not going to get any more money. In fact, the decr- the decline that we received this year, we're already told to expect that next year. And in the next biennium cycle, which is two more years following that, it's going to continue to go down. So the state itself, from the governor's office, is, is telling us, this is going to be a reality, so plan accordingly.
Well, when I get less, I have to tighten my budget.
And we have.
I hear, I hear government saying, well, we'll just take more.
Our budget's as tight as it could be. When you called the city of Horace, we have the challenge, we want somebody to answer the phone.
Incremental increases, rather than just boom, ninety percent. Because it'll cost me to leave.
Okay. Well, it's fair, so what's a fair, what's an incremental increase then?
I don't know, you can increase it Plan B or C or anything else, you're saying this is what it's going to be.
Okay. One of the things is, like I said, we spent quite a bit of time on this and I know that ninety percent sounds like a lot and I get that part of it.
It is a lot.
It is a lot, I'm not gonna say it isn't. My taxes go up too, just like everybody else's. But I also understand what's coming here and what, what we need. Now, can we revisit some of this? I suppose we could. We can talk about this a little bit more, but then I gotta figure out, so then what do we not do?
Not get the city administrator?
We need to.
We need, I mean, I, I don't. Go.
We probably need to end the meeting here soon. We gotta, we gotta get.
Then let's wrap up.
My name's Ron Erickson, I've lived in Horace since two thousand and six. I don't envy you guys. You have a really tough job and you're citizens of this city just like we are. You have to live under the same tax rules as we do and you come from all over developments and, and, uh, all over. I did stop by and receive one of the budgets from Vance and, um, uh, I understand that the personnel, which is one of the things that you talk about a lot, is really important and I understand that. But it's an increase of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the, for the year. But the total increase is four hundred and eighteen, I think. So the personnel constitutes only about a little over twenty-five percent of that.
And then the two, the, basically about a hundred and fifty of it is the equipment and buildings and ground, so it's about a little portion.
Well, there's, in the, in the budget, there's twenty, twenty line items for expenses. Seven of those line items increased by over a hundred percent. Four of those line items increased by three hundred percent, and one of them increased by two hundred percent. I'm wondering if those aren't some of the places you can sharpen your knives and go in and look at, at the possibility. I can run through the list if you want. The other point is that we're throwing around ninety percent increase a lot, and it is a ninety percent increase of the mill levy. My taxes are going to go up more than I want them to, but the actual increase in my property tax would be about twenty-five percent. So, so I feel very sorry for the people that, that aren't going to be able to handle that.
So do we, I mean, that's the thing.
Absolutely.
This isn't an optimum situation at all, you know, it's just that we're thrust into this now, we have to come up with what is the better way to handle this.
And I guess my only suggestion is to, to look at the other two-thirds or three-quarters of the increases that you have, possibly sharpen the pencils a little bit, go in there and see what you can do, maybe what can you put off for another year, and help us out a little bit in that way.
Okay, pretty sure enough.
That's a good request.
Okay, one more, and then I think we're going to wrap it up here. Go.
My name's Karen, I live in Greyhawk subdivision, and I don't need to, with the dead horse, about the ninety-two percent, but I also live in the development that doesn't get any city services. And we have a little private road that was put in out there, and the neighbors came for it, and now the city of West Fargo is developing to the west of us, and they want to hook up to our road and be able to drive through it. And I don't think Horace has done much to help us to stop that, because we're not built to allow for us to trap.
So to that point, we are meeting with, we've scheduled some meetings with the city engineers for West Fargo to try and mitigate and come up with another plan for having...
So I was tired, there's going to be some discussion at this meeting about that?
Uh, no, I, we've had the discussion, we've talked to them, we've actually got a, we're in process of trying to get a memorandum of understanding with West Fargo around how that wilds ten is going to be managed and what other options there are, rather than that road being a connector for that development, because you're absolutely right, that doesn't, that's not going to work. So we have to come up with another plan. So we've started that discussion, we've also got another discussion regarding the stormwater, the stormwater, so we're working on both of those issues for the Greyhawk residents.
All right, thank you. And the other thing I wanted to bring, we just talked about the other expenses to look at that, but also, I don't understand how we could possibly, the kind of, an administrator and other assistant, or planner, inspector, or assessor, as employees of the city this size that we have, twenty-seven hundred people going to break four hundred, those are all expensive positions for a city this size. Maybe there's some type of position we can do as a contract job? Maybe we have to look at the employees we have and revise all of those job descriptions and consolidate some of them and make more additions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. What, what I'm going to recommend we do, guys, let's talk about this a little bit more. Take any input we got tonight, let's go over this this week or so, and let's just see if we can come up with...
Come back for the next meeting.
What's our process then to get this, our budgets approved, and we do it, have to do another public meeting?
We got to do it by the twenty-fifth, don't we?
I'll talk to Luca.
The budget has to be done by October seventh.
Yeah.
So we got time.
So we can bring it to the next meeting, or do we have to have a special meeting?
I think we can, I'll consult with our attorneys on that, but I believe I can, but you got to give me a few days to do the paperwork.
Okay.
But yeah, I think it'd be doable. If you want to schedule another public hearing?
Do we need a motion to postpone this?
Because we should get together, we should have another meeting, a public meeting, and we can talk about this stuff. But we go through the numbers, we can narrow it down.
But then basically means we have to republish.
Yeah, I don't know, how long do we need?
No, that's not it, that means this is your public hearing for your...
But if we, if we change the budget in some significant way so that the mill levy changes, okay, let's say it goes down, does that mean that the county has to reset another letter?
No, we can decrease it.
Okay, so it's only when there's an increase that we need to have a public information meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So if we come up with another Plan B that says, okay, we're going to cut it by X, Y, Z, then we don't need...
Yeah, I'm not sure if your next meeting is the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Be the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So what would you like me to put in the minutes?
Does it, we table the public, or we just close the public hearing and we're going to have another? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, but we're going to revisit the budget.
At this, so, do you need, do you need a vote? Do you need a vote, Vance?
You're not doing this?
No, do we need a motion?
You're just, you're just tabling it, just closing the public hearing.
So we're tabling the discussion till the twenty-fifth meeting, okay?
Okay, guys, so what we'll do is that, we'll revisit the budget, council, we'll talk about this and see what we can do. We'll try and sharpen the pencils a little bit more and see what we can come up with, and maybe we have to do a little sliding as to when we think about hiring, maybe we have to do that, something in a Q-three, Q-four position next year. We'll have to look at that a little bit more. Those positions though are something that we are going to need to have filled, whether it be a contract, whether it be whatever, we're going to need help with that, or we're going to get behind on some of this stuff, and it's, I don't really want to do that.
We also need to consider the tax abatement, since we don't, obviously don't need a grand angel, we know we're running...
Right, that'll be part, that'll be a separate conversation beyond the budget, but I think that's something we need to talk about. But that's part of that thing, we have a contracted planner that we are working with right now to help us with some of this stuff, and that's one of the things he's talked about too. So that's what we're trying to figure out, is what do we do here in the short term, and how do we handle this stuff in the long term?
So that conversation will be added to an agenda at future meetings?
Correct.
Corey, if it's okay with the board, I would like to publish in our legal paper that we will revisit on the twenty-fifth, so that everyone has an opportunity to review it, to read it again, or to...
Sure. And I think we'll put it up, we'll put it up on our Facebook page and...
Put it up on Facebook, on the website. Yep, we'll publish the updates on the website.
We don't want anybody to miss the conversation.
So check the website.
Yeah, on Facebook, so. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming, appreciate the input.
Thank you.
It is what it is.
Thank you for coming, thank you Shane for coming.
So form legal's yet to have it on Wednesday.
No, thank you!
Happy this Wednesday.
Good feedback.
Yeah, no shit, right?
Right. Folks, five minute break, we need to get started here in a couple more minutes, so please, if you're planning on leaving, please, if you'd like to continue our meeting.
Thank you.
How's your golf game?
Best is ever good, I love golf.
Okay, guys, let's continue on, so we're not here all night tonight, okay? So Gary, like I said, we'll just, he's got his gig tomorrow night with planning and zoning, so we'll move past that, I explained that to him when he showed up here.
Now, do I post this notice now for tomorrow?
For, for what?
Well, tell me what you got.
He's going to be in front of planning and zoning tomorrow night with his proposal that he's got for his property.
Okay, but is there a special meeting?
No, that says in front of planning.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all good. Where's our law enforcement fellow, is he back there?
You're up.
You may, man, you're up, go ahead. So what's a good word this month?
Pretty quiet kind of this month, just eighty-four calls for service we had. With that, there's two crashes, five reckless driving, one juvenile complaint, eight animal calls, five alcohol-related calls, seven medicals, fifteen citations, and sixty-seven warnings, zero parking tickets, and two drug-related offenses. With those, I don't know if there's anybody new here or whatever, but calls for service are just anything that we end up getting called to. It doesn't include any COP time that we're doing, any traffic stops we're doing, any bar checks, any things like that that we're doing. So with those eighty-four calls for service, that includes seven traffic complaints, just us checking on people, or people calling in complaints about a vehicle stranded in the road, or somebody stuck somewhere, something like that that we check on. Then twelve calls for deputies attempting warrants in the city. There's no notable calls for service this month. It's the first meeting that we had since tonight's unite, that was successful, I thought, for our first year. We had a good showing, we went through the good majority of all the food that we had and stuff, so I think it was good for the first year. Again, big thank you, we had tons of people that assisted with making that possible.
I thought we were pretty good too.
Yeah, the whole fire department and everybody was out there helping out with everything, so that was huge help too, so. And then for just our miscellaneous things, Cole and I both went to the city council and patrol meetings last month, we both had state firearm qualifications last month, I attended emergency vehicle operations course, and then came down for the Bean Day parade too, so.
So question the crashes, were there any injuries with either the crashes, were they related to County Road seventeen?
Um, no, for this one, I think what these ones were, I don't believe there was any injuries for any of these ones.
So just a more, just a fender bender kind of thing?
Yeah, I think they were both, one was just like somebody backed into somebody else, another one was something minor too.
Okay.
I had one recently that was on County fourteen west of town, where a vehicle rolled. That one, there was alcohol and drugs involved with that one, but I don't believe that was in August, that it was in the month prior.
Do you have any update on when County seventeen to the south is going to reopen?
Um, well, from what I thought, and trying to think, I'm pretty sure that they said that that was going to be kind of a couple of year project, was my thinking behind the whole thing, but...
I thought they were opening it up in October, late October and early November.
The whole way down there?
Yeah, because they were going to be building a bypass.
Sharon, right off, four up. Good question, Sharon, because I went into town today at noon, and on the fourteenth, Cas seventeen is closed north, and now we're closed south. What's up with the closure going north?
I think it's West Fargo bringing that pipe across the road.
Temporary?
Yeah.
One day? Okay, okay.
And a lot of that stuff's done with the highway department, so I don't not, I don't necessarily know specifically on the dates and stuff or something like that.
You didn't get the memo, right?
Yeah, they didn't send it to me.
So I'll call Jason Benson.
Yeah, we should get ahold of Jason. We should double check, she's going to get ahold of Jason Benson, though we should probably know when that's going to be opening up again.
Yep, great.
It was supposed to open in the fall, so I was wondering the same thing, Shane, are they opening it in the spring?
They actually tore up all the road in August last week, and the train's sitting in the middle, so I would expect it to be open at this point, you would have to repaint the whole road.
Mm-hmm.
And Phil had two hours worth of it, and probably...
Is that how much they ripped out?
Yeah, they ripped out eight times, that's huge. So were they, I wonder if they're planning on leaving at gravel all winter?
Yeah, that's what I'm worried, they're going to throw down gravel to keep it?
Actually, I went to talk to Amos last Friday, they said they're pulling up two weeks during the year.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Get ahold of Jason. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I got.
Perfect.
Thanks, sir. Yep.
All right, Lucas, you're up, go.
So Mr. Mayor, the only thing I really have is, we need to do a second reading on a rezon that was done a couple of years ago, and it must have got lost in the mix. So the first reading was held on August third, two thousand and fifteen, it's for, it rezones from agriculture to suburban residential, and it's actually a parcel that's, is it fourteen or fifteen that goes east and west?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
It's there by the river.
No, he's on sixteen.
Is that what it is? Trent and Claire Mark?
Yeah.
On sixteen, you're down in the neck of the woods? Okay.
Well, I know that they have a house there, and then their daughter and husband just built a house there. So it's basically, everything's already happened. We just want to make sure that the second reading is done.
Checking the notice, I could not find where we actually had a final, final on this list. Lucas and I decided we should probably bring it to a closure, even though it's a done deal.
Russ, do you remember anything about that? I'm just asking, man, I'm just asking, take it easy.
I love the deer in the headlights lug.
I already asked, what is this? I don't remember this, I showed you the date, that's why I don't remember it.
Well, it's, we're looking at two, but I don't remember this one, I'm thinking, okay, I need to eat more fish, I don't know what's going on here.
You weren't here.
So the new, the new chunk is three acres, and the other one looks like it's bigger than three acres.
Shane, did you have any data?
Yeah, I just remember they asked for that, I don't know, I mean, I shouldn't get the phone.
Yeah, Shane, we just, I don't know what happened, maybe, maybe I forgot, I don't recall.
She says we would like our daughter and son-in-law to build on our land, so it can be close to their grandchildren.
So the two lots, basically of...
Okay, so can I get a motion to further rezon, approving the second reading?
So make sure there are two lots of size, like three acres?
Yeah, like I said, one's, one's three acres and the other one's bigger than that. And suburban residential, I believe, is just one acre.
Okay, get a motion?
So I'll make a motion just to...
Sharon?
I'll second.
Brian? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
And then is there any chance that we can do a special meeting tomorrow for that dedication and, and vacation for that Duke Creek Parkway?
Yeah.
Who do we need, do we need all us?
I just need three.
When?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, when?
Twenty-four hours in a day.
What time would you like, what time do you need to be on site?
Well, it has to be after planning, and I don't know...
Oh, tomorrow night?
What you got going on tomorrow, just?
What do we got tomorrow? Nothing.
Just that.
About seven oh five.
Okay, so we should be there at seven o'clock?
I can't.
I just need three.
I can probably be there.
Tomorrow at seven.
Mm-hmm.
Later, yes, nine at seven.
How much later?
I don't know, my daughter's swimming and I'm timing, so I'll be there for the duration of this for me, so.
My son has a soccer game, so it'd be at least nine o'clock.
So it could be seven thirty, eight o'clock?
Or do we do it earlier?
We can, it has to be after planning.
How about in the morning?
How about Wednesday?
How about in the morning?
Okay, it's got to be after planning, they meet at seven tomorrow.
Can we have it on Wednesday?
Yeah. Anytime on Wednesday.
Would be better.
Anytime on Wednesday after nine o'clock.
No, I'd have to do an evening on Wednesday.
Before thirty? Five?
Five, I can think of five.
Five?
Yep.
Just so you know, this is from two thousand and fourteen.
So it's really high priority.
Well, it was approved.
It's done, it's done, the road's in place, Deer Creek is in place, it had to be moved to line up with the road across in place. We, we met, we passed, everything, everything happened, apparently the paperwork never got filed.
What I believe happened is the developer never created the mile or four, so he never got signatures, and then it went over a year, and as soon as it goes over a year, then the county won't accept it. So now we're just doing the de-diligence for the city, having them just approve it in front of planning, and then approve it at city council, and that way it is a done deal, new signatures, um, for two thousand and seventeen.
Okay.
That way the county will actually record it.
Wednesday at five, your office? Or what?
We can, we can do it here.
Here? Okay.
Wherever, what's for you?
Here's perfect.
As we go?
Mm-hmm.
Lastly, big iron a little early, but I'll do it for you guys.
Take one for the team, bud, thanks, appreciate that.
Tuesday and Thursday.
Please stop by and visit me.
We'll meet over here, then at five.
Okay.
Okay.
Like I said, it'll take thirty seconds.
Yep.
Can't you just open the phone?
Probably. I don't actually notice on it.
All right. You're good?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Jim, you're up.
All right, Mr. Mayor, counsel, you've all got the update, sent it out Friday, and we'll touch on the high points. Uh, the first one is the sewer project, the lining, uh, that project is complete, working on the closeout documentation. That gets to be a little lengthy, being through the, through the health department. We did approve progress estimate number seven as part of the consent agenda, but we do have a contract change order, and that change order is for the lining and coating of the, um, manhole outside of list station number one here. We've already discussed the cost, we've already discussed it at length.
Yep.
But, uh, it would be an increase of, um, sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, so, and that was a substantial savings from having to replace that structure.
Mm-hmm.
But even though, that was a change order that we approved, right?
Uh, you approved this one, I brought this price to, back to the council, so I, I would say we'd formally approve it today, since I got the paperwork, so.
Is it for a red line?
Yes, sixteen one. So we would need a motion to, uh, to approve the change order of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, so George, take it.
So, can I get a motion, to, Brian made a motion?
Second.
Dave made a second. See, roll call.
So roll call?
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the next project we have is water sewer improvement district two thousand and sixteen, two Arrowwood. Uh, that project is complete, we approved the final balancing change order at the last meet, at the last, uh, council meeting. Today, we approve the final estimate. The contractor did cook up last Friday and finish out some of the topsoil and the, uh, you know, patching, so everything has been completed.
Last punch list items are taken care of.
Last punch list items were taken care of, so, uh, that, that was approved via the consent agenda, so, uh, we have no action on that. Uh, street improvement district, uh, that's all complete, we've got all the paperwork back in now, and I'm gonna remove that from the future, future reports. Uh, the water improvement, this water improvement project, the looping on Wall, on, uh, County Road seventeen and the replacement along the wall, we have progressive estimate number two, that was approved via the consent agenda. We also have a change order. Uh, during construction, two houses were found, four houses, actually, were found, they have two services, they were two common services.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, these change orders are to break them off. Uh, one change order was, uh, two thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars, six cents, and the other one was three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-one cents for a grand total of increase of six thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, and this is for the work to, uh, now everyone along the wall has their own individual water service.
Now, that amount falls within the contingency, right?
Oh, yes.
We could still use that, the contingency for that, okay.
Yes, this is, uh, we, the, to date, we are at about, let me look at the numbers here. To date, we are at three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and ten cents for cost to date, and our bid price was four hundred and seven thousand seven hundred seventy-eight, so we're, we're underneath our bid.
Yeah.
Underneath our bid, too, and I don't anticipate there being a whole lot of, uh, additional costs, this is pretty close to being a semi-final.
We're gonna come in.
We should come in under.
All right, that's awesome.
So, so Jim, that helps them with water pressure as well?
Yes, on the back end of my.
Do you want to go through that now?
Yeah, we might as well, since we're there. If you look at, I put together a little summary, uh, real water came out in May during the hydrant flow test, uh, during the hydrant flushing, and, uh, took some data, and they came back on the twenty-fourth of August and, and took, and did some more testing after the project was complete, and basically, uh, pretty much everything doubled, so.
So the column for everyone to look at is this second, this column right here, if you can see, uh, I don't have it set, so this column over here. So you can see, for example, one thirteen Ironwood went from five oh seven to one thousand.
And that's gallons per minute at twenty PSI, so, uh, the worst one was four hundred and ninety-nine gallons per minute, which isn't very good, jumped up to a thousand forty-eight, so, right now, uh, glancing through all of our records, we have at least a thousand gallon, gallons per minute coming out of every hydrant. There, there's one where I think it's nine ninety-six, so relatively a thousand, so that's a substantial improvement in there, plus we've increased the redundancy in three places now, for operations in that line, so.
The other key one, the other key one is that the school is up to eleven hundred. We didn't have a measurement before, but we know it was under.
Yeah, the, uh, one, one example here is two thirty-two Chesta Drive, and when we did it, uh, in May, it was, the nine PSI was at the hydrant, and after the project, it was at the twenty-two PSI, so, um, very.
That's incredible.
It's very good results, so, but we will need to approve this change order, need a motion to approve the change order for an increase of, uh, six thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents to Kemper Construction.
I'll make the motion.
Sharon makes a motion?
Second.
There's a second from Brian, and then Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I get that, should I, I should probably publish this for.
You can.
Uh, I can't split that out, can you send this to a separate file?
Yeah. Yep, I can do that. Uh, okay, moving on, the seventy-sixth Avenue ditch cleanout, that project, that project is complete. Um, I think Vance, did you have the billing on that one from Glacier?
I did.
There will be one more bill coming, I was told today, for the seating along that we approved at the last meeting, you were going at that meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's a, uh, fifteen hundred, around fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So.
For the farmer.
Yep.
For the farmer, so.
Did he say when he was gonna get that, yeah?
It's done. It's all, it's all done.
Good, good, good.
Everything is completed, so.
Excellent.
I'll remove that one from the list next time. Uh, Lost River, paving is completed now, uh, they're working on the earthwork and the electrical items. That project did have an interim completion date of the thirty-first of Au- August, uh, that was, uh, set forth by the developer. The contractor had some difficulty meeting that, they actually got it done probably the, uh, let's see, so, uh, third, the third of September, so, uh, there is some negotiations there. Jack did have some, um, timeframes that he wanted to meet, so he said he'd be a little willing to recommend if you guys don't assess liquid damages, but we can, I just wanted to get it out there that there wasn't an interim completion date, it wasn't met. I sent a letter to the contractor, so everyone should be aware of it, it's just, if you plan on us levying it back on, so.
Quick comment on, on, um, Lost River, Wall Avenue, uh, um, dust control, got a bill from Glacier and Borad for twenty-two hundred dollars. Talked to Jack today, and they're gonna pay half of that.
Nice.
So, that's just for that section along the wall, okay.
From the river to the first entrance, basically the river.
The county must be doing the, the dust control on seventy-sixth?
Uh, I don't know.
No, that was a, um, that was a.
That's a separate project?
That was improvement to the gravel, rebuilding up that road, and I think they did do that, they put something down.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I noticed it significantly better, so that's awesome, they're getting wall taken care of, too, good.
Uh, you did approve the fifth progress estimate during your consent agenda, that puts us at about sixty-seven percent complete. Uh, I think the items now will go fairly quick, they seem to be pretty, they're bulk items, so they'll add up quicker than the, uh, unit price items or lump sums, so.
So that's Lost River?
Yes.
You're, any concern that that is?
I don't think so.
Your over budget, or?
No, 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 we do have, we do have some change orders in there, but there's a, a pretty, uh, good contingency in that project, so right now, everything is, seems to be on order, and same thing with the completion of it, we haven't had any indication that the overall completion date won't be met on that.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Uh, the SSL, we are still waiting for the health department and the public finance authority, the industrial commission has to meet and approve the loan. Apparently, they meet at the end of the month, we will know.